January 7, 2025. Holy moly, 2025. Okay, first thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the Committee of the Whole for November 19, 2024, Committee of the Whole, December 3, 2024. Are there any corrections or anything that? Nothing?
No, good to me.
Okay, then.
I'll make a motion.
I will take one.
Okay, just a sec. I will make a motion that we approve the minutes for the Committee of the Whole for November 19 and December 3, 2024.
Hey, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need a second.
Oh, sorry.
I seconded it.
Oh, he already did. See, he said it in my ear and mayor heard it.
And I was going to say aye, wasn't I?
So there you go, it's done. So everyone say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, so now that that's all taken care of, thank you, Paul.
Anytime.
You got my side.
It's gonna be a long effort, isn't it?
What?
It's gonna be a long effort, isn't it?
No, it won't. It will be very quick. Okay, number one, Economic Development Corporation of Utah, EDC Utah. Presentation, Elvonne Farrell, Greg Biss, Dean, and Scott.
Cuthbertson.
Thank you.
Yes.
With the EDC Utah, you have 30 minutes.
Okay, perfect. Let me pass around some papers here. This is an economic impact report on the work that we've done and its impact on Murray City.
It's Scott. I don't know if you can reach him.
Oh, yeah, that's short.
We're gonna get the tech set up quickly and so just be honest.
Great, so just as some background, so EDC Utah is a private nonprofit and we are members of their organization, dues-paying members. And so we wanted to invite Scott Cuthbertson, their CEO and president, and Greg Biss, being Director of Community Strategy, here to talk about EDC Utah, what it is, and how Murray can be involved with that.
Elvonne?
Yes.
We are dues-paying members.
Yes.
What are the dues?
So for us, and it's based off of population and kind of membership levels, it's 7,350.
Per year?
Per year, annually.
Thank you. And how long have we been a member?
Ah, that is a good question.
Since we've been in.
Yeah?
For a good 12 years.
Yeah. And how many do you, how many cities or how many do you have?
We have 42 currently. But we're a membership-based organization that has both private and public membership. So we have 150 private members that support our mission as well.
Give me an example of a private member.
So development groups like the Gartner Company or the Boyer Company would be one that supports our mission.
Well, that's good to know, I wasn't aware of that.
We've got some slides in here that will share who some of our other members are as well and.
Great, thank you.
Now I'll turn the time over to you.
Okay, excellent. Well, we really appreciate your time, you know, it's valuable. And mayor, thanks for having us, council members. We appreciate your support of our organization. Maybe a little more background and then I can jump into kind of a year in review, what we've been up to, what we've done with, you know, for the city and what's happening across the state and even kind of nationally, some trends that we're seeing in economic development. And also how we've pivoted our model a little bit and I'll tell you why that is and what that looks like. Please interrupt me as we go. But just kind of at the outset here, we've been around four years roughly. We were set up back in the 80s. As Greg mentioned, public-private partnerships. The mission is to create great jobs and to catalyze economic opportunity across the state. And that is what we're all about. We are primarily known for corporate business recruitment and expansion. So we help bring great companies to Utah. We help those that are here stay here and expand, including in Murray City.
Can you give us examples of companies you brought in? Or is that later on?
Yeah. I'm happy to talk about one. So actually in this project report here, you'll see on the top page in bold, Project Seahawk. This was a company that we brought in. This was a few years back, back in 2018. But when you land one of these great opportunities, you know, the impact is large. It was 200 jobs that came to Murray, $4.5 million in capital investment. They absorbed 25,000 feet of real estate. We actually have a project that is looking at Murray currently, Project Roundtable, it's a manufacturing job. They're in the site visit phase. So we don't pick winners or losers. We market the state out to site selectors and, you know, on average, we have around 100 active projects at any given time. We have about 120 right now. And when Elvonne, the city, is interested and one of these projects is looking to come into the state, they'll send back, basically respond to an RFI and then we'll bring the company and they'll see the site and help navigate through that process.
Excellent.
Welcome. So we'll dig into this in a little bit. But aside from the recruitment, what we do is offer in-house research. So we've done a number of research projects for the city. We also hold different events and we do trainings annually that help economic developers kind of sharpen their tools. We also give cities an opportunity to present what they're working on. And that's something we do that gives exposure to what's happening across the city, to our members, again, developers, corporations and others who may be interested in working for the city. And then that falls under our community development program. We also award some grants. We awarded one last year for economic development training to the city. And we've helped with a number of different research projects and events. At a high level, every dollar that gets invested in EDC Utah, that equates to $3,800 roughly generated to the Utah economy. And that comes by way of direct, indirect, induced jobs and the salaries and the capital investment that comes with that. Yes, about some members on the screen here shows who our founding members are, Zions Bank, Rio Tinto, Enbridge, Rocky Mountain Power, Select Health. And then we have a number of champions, kind of our second highest tier, that make up our board. And then lots of other private sector companies. This is just a sampling of them. And then our community members. So you're in good company with a number of other city and county members. The state is also a supporter. We have a seat on our board for the legislature, members of legislature and the governor's office as well. And they support us with some financial investment. Want to give you a look at our pipeline at the moment. We're seeing a lot of manufacturing opportunities that are coming into the state. You know, tech is down a little bit with what happened with the banking situation over the last few years, but it's coming back and we see, you know, given the ecosystem in Utah, we'll always see some technology companies coming in. But we're also seeing more activity around life science, energy, and more. You know, we know that Murray is a mature city. It's a built-out city largely compared to some others. But there's still opportunities for coming in, for the right type of company. Again, whether it's a manufacturing company, tech company, or something in that field.
What kind of companies are usually attracted to Murray?
Yeah, maybe others.
So for instance, the two RFIs they have listed on their roundtable, Molecule. Roundtable's a distribution. Obviously, our location in the county makes a really good fit for a distribution company, specifically a smaller one, where we don't have large warehouse space available. And then Molecule is life science, which is a perfect fit here in Murray with our healthcare industries and other life science companies that we have.
Show you our FY '24 sort of project metrics and what we track. So obviously, we're tracking the number of companies that land in Utah, but also how many jobs are created, how much square footage they take up. That's of interest to those who have real estate holdings. And then capital investment. We saw a really massive amount of capital investment that came in last year. Most of that was for, was related to data center projects, which are really capital-intensive. And that's a trend that we're seeing. There's a lot of data center companies trying to find a home in Utah and pros and cons of that type of operation. But we're seeing those come into the market. We had, I think, somewhere in the order of 30 wins last year and here are some of those companies. And I mentioned, you know, one project that Murray won five years ago. These are, this is 30 projects that we worked with. We have hundreds of leads and lots of effort that goes into supporting a project win. And naturally, not everybody picks Utah. But when you do get one, it has a lasting impact in terms of the jobs created and the revenue that comes into the city from that, obviously, property taxes as well. Talk a little bit about our investor relations sort of function. That's the team that Greg leads. And we've really been creating opportunities for our members to get more value from being part of EDC Utah, not just marketing your city and kind of waiting for a project to come in, which we're always doing, but opportunities to network, get to know our private sector members and public sector members. And again, to kind of present on what's happening in your city, market your city. And then we support, you know, specific conferences. For instance, there's a large retail conference that takes place every year in Las Vegas. And Murray has been down there. We've presented on Murray City. We've had materials about the city. We have a booth where we allow Murray City to meet with retail companies.
We appreciate that because when we have nowhere else to go, we can come hang out with you guys.
That's right. Yeah, and you know, on the topic of retail, that's something that we're pivoting into more heavily and is something that obviously would be of interest to Murray, given your built-out city. Great if you land one of these bigger projects that could fit in an office space. But we know retail is always desirable and great for your revenue. And we have purchased a new software program. We talked about this with Elvonne, the mayor, and others that allows you to do some economic analysis on where your strengths and weaknesses are in attracting retail companies to the city, help you kind of know what to expect and how to recruit those. So we're doing more of that. We're also doing more research. So we're providing you with community profiles and assessments that can reveal some things about your city data-wise that will be helpful in your economic development as well. We are investing more in our research division. We actually just co-authored a big study with Kemsie Gardner Policy Institute on innovation ecosystems in Utah. So we looked at where are we strong, where are we weak, what are the gaps? And we'd be happy to share that with you. But it kind of shows that Utah is very innovative, but we need some, you know, some better, you know, financial tools. Us, you know, always could use more venture capital in helping in some of these areas. But it gives a kind of a lay of the land for where we're strong and how we can improve in Utah. Want to switch gears a little bit and just talk about some higher-level trends and what we are talking about when companies are coming into the state and want to know about Utah. Everyone benefits from our growth. I know that can be a challenge managing growth, but it's also great for an economy. If you're gonna stay economically vibrant, you need that population growth. And we are one of the fastest-growing states. Interestingly, for the first time in probably decades, ninth century, most of the growth in Utah came from in-migration rather than natural birth. And, you know, there was some dynamics there with COVID and people finding Salt Lake as a great home. But also, we're starting to track kind of that national trend of having fewer kids, even though we still do lead as number one in the country. But our trend is moving in that same direction that you see nationally. The population is expected to double by 2065. So that brings opportunities and challenges. And we remain the youngest state, 32 years of age on average versus 39 years across the country. So we're growing. We have low unemployment. That's a two-edged sword. That's great on the one hand. But if you're gonna attract great companies, we need the workforce. So we work with universities and help share what we're seeing and in terms of what companies are coming, what their needs are. We talked about the age. We're also among the most diverse economies in the country, the fifth most diverse. So we are very strong, especially in advanced manufacturing, aerospace, defense, life science, technology, and financial services, as well as energy. And this is kind of eye-opening for a lot of companies that we work with. When they come and they see kind of the market that we're promoting, which is the whole state, but in particular, most work, most of these jobs come into the Wasatch Front. The Wasatch Front, as a metropolitan area, is on par with Orlando, Charlotte, Cleveland, Sacramento. That's where a lot of companies are looking at when they come into the state. So yes, they want to look at, you know, Murray for the real estate and for the amenities and access. But they'll, they may land in Murray, but haven't have looked at the whole county or even more broadly, what's the labor pool they pull from. Opportunities and challenges. We talked about the growth. You've heard of the NIMBYs, but now the bananas have come out. This is the build absolutely nothing anywhere to anything crowd. We understand, no one likes the traffic or the bad air quality and so forth, but.
Build absolutely nothing here. I didn't hear this.
There's quite a few bananas out there. But, you know, we, it's kind of incumbent on us to help talk about why it's still important to grow the economy, you know? And that is part of the answer to sustaining our quality of life. You know, I believe that as long as we have a great business environment and we have these great mountains around us, we're gonna continue to see people come into the state because we're cheaper than California. And costs have gone up, but we're still, compared to other places, we're a great place to live and do business. And we believe that by proactively building business, you bring in the revenue to invest in infrastructure and things that can help sustain that quality of life. So that's part of our mission. That's why we're not as focused now as, you know, on raw job growth, but we want to be thoughtful about the companies we're bringing in and where they're going and do provide some research, thought leadership on that. But at the end of the day, we're all about creating great jobs. So that's the presentation that we had. Love to answer any questions that you have.
This is really helpful because, you know, we would see the line item, right, mayor? We would see and we would wonder, what do these guys do?
Well, that's why I asked them. I said, would you guys come in and explain? We just knew that we had a nice place to sit.
For $7,000. You should be a gold chair.
Yes, so this is really helpful. So thanks for coming in and reporting to us. I really appreciate it. And if you could do this every once in a while, if, you know, if you're able to let us know, if you're able to bring in businesses and companies so we can, then we'll even appreciate you more.
There you go. Absolutely.
And I do think part of that, they do work with staff quite often and we can definitely do a better job of presenting to you how we're working with that.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
So when we bring a business in to do a site tour, like Project Molecule, we can report that back to you and let you know. Sorry.
Besides you, who else do they work with in the staff?
I think it's been mostly me.
You, okay. Who was it before you? Was there anybody?
Probably Jared Hall.
Okay.
Been the one that worked most with the EDC.
Did you work with these guys?
I did.
I thought so. That's how I knew you, because you hung out with these guys.
Yeah, I came to Murray from EDC.
That's what I thought.
I always introduce myself as the new Elvonne.
Doing improved.
You've got a good one here.
Oh, we know. They're keeping it.
Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go on to discussion item number two. My notes, discussion on a resolution opting into an authorizing participation in the Utah CPACE program to facilitate finance CPACE projects approving authorizing an agreement with Sustainable Real Estate Solution Incorporated to administer the City CPACE program. Elvonne and Beatty, welcome with Sustainable Real Estate Solution Incorporated. 30 minutes. It was, but we just want to make sure we have everything all covered before you take your time.
You're stuck with me again, so. Sounds like it was the last time. I know, right? Yeah. Beatty is with SRS. And so while we're getting things set up here, simply put, CPACE is a program or a tool that the city can use with our businesses and property owners to support sustainable and energy-friendly and environmentally-friendly goals. Basically, we do that through the CPACE program, which is administered or managed from the Office of Energy Development and then administered through SRS. And then a property owner is able to opt in to this program, which would put an assessment on their property, which would allow them to then pay through property taxes. Basically, yeah, okay, we'll let Beatty.
But it's, PACE has been enacted in like over 37, I think, I guess 38 states. But each one does it a little bit differently. So Colorado is through their property tax system. In Utah, not at all. So I'll go over kind of some of the highlights of the program. If you have questions, you know, let me know.
Well, my first question was, was there a business that wanted to do this but was waiting for the city to approve this program?
Yes.
Was there a business?
Yes.
Could you let us know the business? Or is that still confidential? If it is, that's fine.
I can tell you that it's Paul Dowlin, who's a gentleman. He had two businesses, one Dowlin Tile and the other Utah Storage. He is looking at projects to improve their energy efficiency in a number of factors. Both these projects would be in excess of $1 million. So they're, at least in my mind, fairly significant. And I was introduced to him, or he was introduced to the program through a contractor who's very familiar with CPACE.
Okay.
So I have.
So I was reading the material and I thought, was there something that?
Yeah, he actually submitted an application, which is how we can tell whether people are serious because they have to fill out, you know, a lot of bit of information. And those, all of the information we put together is shared with the city or county. So just so you're aware of that. So I will, am I?
Here.
Am I good? Oh, okay. So CPACE, or Commercial Property Assessment Clean Energy, is a program, as mentioned, that the administrative responsibility is the Office of Energy Development. It's been in statute now for a number of years. I've been involved and SRS has been involved since 2018. And I'll just tell you a bit about the program. You can interrupt me at any time. It's enabled, as I said, as part of statute and it's to promote energy efficiency and water conservation. It also, in Utah, includes seismic upgrades. They're not energy-related, but from a resiliency standpoint and because they're so expensive, that was seen as something that would be good for the greater good. So what the owner does is request that a voluntary special assessment be placed on their property. Now, in Utah, it's equivalent a water or sewer assessment. And the reason the city or county would even be involved is they are the entities that have the right to place such an assessment. So in Utah, and like a lot of other states, there's no relationship to taxes or the taxing of the party. I'll explain the process a little bit more, but it's directly managed, once the lien is placed and the loan is placed, by the third-party lender. So I'll explain that a little bit more. It's directly between the borrower and lender and not through the jurisdiction. The program in Utah applies to both existing buildings and new construction. And there's also a provision for a lookback, which allows owners to refinance improvements that have been done within the last three years. So they can't have been completed, but it has to be within that timeframe. And this is all statute. So the program benefits characteristics, it's performance-based. So unlike market value appraisals, these projects are underwritten based on the building performance. It's not, doesn't require a personal guarantee. Obviously, the lenders are gonna look at the financial, you know, aspects of the owner's capabilities, but it's primarily focused on the efficiency of the building. In statute, these loans are eligible for up to 30-year terms, which are fairly lengthy. It's fixed-rate, non-recourse financing. And again, the ultimate goal of the program is to promote energy efficiency and water conservation.
And the fixed rate is 6%?
The fixed, well, no, the fixed rate is actually negotiated between the borrower and the lender.
Where did I see something about that?
We're not sure. We, because the lending environment has been so, we, the state did not want to get involved in negotiating, you know, with, between lenders and borrowers. So that is all done directly between the lender and the borrower.
Yeah, so ultimately, this is a way to get private financing through the lender and then it would just be paid back through the assessment.
And the city facilitates it then?
Yeah, I'll get to a little bit better explanation. Thank you. The, there's a little chart in the corner that shows that the repayment is set, whereas, as we all have kind of experienced, increases in energy costs, like 30% as of last year. You can't really control the cost, you know, over time, but you can control the consumption. And if the building is more efficient, then it's gonna cost less to run. And that's where a lot of the value with this type of financing is, is it encouraging it to be a more efficient building. So you mentioned the lending, third, at the last bullet point, third-party lenders provides competitive lending options. So in Utah, we have more than 30 capital providers who have signed up with the state. They've been through, you know, an indoctrination of what the program like is here and provides some good competition for various types of projects. So what's eligible? Basically, almost any kind of commercial property. Here's a list, you know, office, commercial, industrial, retail, hospitality. Utah does not have residential pace, but it does have multifamily, if there are five or more units. So they look, you know, again, energy efficiency and water conservation measures, EV charging, seismic, and their related soft costs. So energy audits, feasibility studies, environmental cleanup, those types of things are also included in the loan. As far as fees or costs of the program, the program financed fee is 3% of the loan amount.
That's what I was getting.
Okay, okay, there you go.
I knew there was a few.
Okay, thank you. So that is paid only if their transaction actually occurs and that's paid by the borrower. This program has no cost to cities or counties. And I know from the last discussion, you were talking about information, whatever. SRS, as part of their services agreement, we provide, and before the pandemic, I did on a regular basis workshops, you know, for contractors or other interested parties at no charge. I'm working with OED now to get some more in-person, you know, workshops in place. And if you decide to move forward, then that would be an option that would be up to you as well if you had businesses that you thought would like to learn more about it. We provide those. So how the process works? We engage directly with the owner, the lender, and the city to manage the process. Typically, folks will reach out to me or their lender will reach out to me or their contractor. And they submit an application directly to me that it can be filled out and submitted online. We have the requisite documents for the lien assessment and then assignment. These have all been vetted initially by one of Utah's assistant AGs. So these are documents that have been used for a number of years now. With minor changes, you know, they're pretty straightforward. So Elvonne has those. So Elon has those. SRS, as it says, coordinates a statutory and technical review. There, we, SRS has engineers on staff that can assess, you know, the information that we're given relative to meeting code compliance requirements and technical requirements. Not my area, I can do the financial, but not so much, you know, the engineering thing. But we do, that's one of the things we do, so that we can provide a report that lets the city know, the owner know, and the lender that this project will meet statutory requirements.
Part of it is, we want these projects to be successful. It's not something where we just want to start going out to every single business and saying, hey, you should apply for CPACE. It doesn't work with every single business and every single new construction project. So it is nice that SRS is able to then analyze it. They also want to see the project be successful, meet the energy requirements. And so that's just another kind of safety net that we have, that the, these projects are vetted to make sure that they make sense with this program.
And that's, that's one of the reasons we were hired to administrate it by the state, is we do have experience. I personally, my background is valuation and consulting commercial, and I specialized in high-performing green building, solar, that type of analysis, what the business case for that is. So, you know, I, I want this program to work for people. If the numbers don't work, it doesn't work. And so, you know, it's, it's just a very pragmatic approach to helping folks if they do want to do more to create a more, you know, efficient building environment. So as I mentioned earlier, there are two different types of approaches. Either it's an existing building or new construction. There's a pretty extensive verification project. I'll drag you through that. But basically, for existing buildings, each of the measures have to, they have to be able to document that there will be an improvement in building performance, which means they have a percentage above where the building sits now that they can document that there will be an improvement. We typically get like a year's worth of utility bills and compare that with each of the measures they want to do to ensure that each one will add to, you know, the performance, height of the performance. With new construction, if they're able to provide all the documentation, they can get up to thirty-five percent of their cost in finance through CPACE. Now, they don't have to take the full thirty-five percent. They figure out with their, you know, financial folks how much of their capital stack they want to use for CPACE. We have Excel templates, et cetera, that they fill out that, that we review to ensure that they do meet those requirements. We create a report, as I mentioned, that goes to the city, to the lender, and to the owner. This is just a typical excerpt. And this particular owner chose to use twenty percent. So, you know, any, it can, it can take any amount up to thirty-five. The majority will take the full amount, but a number, you know, we'll just pick, like I said, what works best for them. This, there are details of how much savings or, you know, what different systems might generate. And this is just an example, you know, an excerpt from one of the reports. You will get before any documents are signed, you know, before the, the transaction is completed. So while the technical verification is ongoing, the owner and the capital provider are negotiating their financing, the owner requests that the city place a voluntary lien on the, on their property. And at the same time, when the city levies the assessment, they concurrently assign it to a third-party lender. So the city is more of a conduit. The, the projects that have, it is noted here, that have existing financing, their lender needs to consent to that. All of those steps have to be met, all of requirements have to be met before any of this, you know, can be completed. Once the lender has assigned the assessment, they take full responsibility for all collection and any enforcement that may occur, and indemnifies the city going forward, so that the city is technically out of it. And then after that, and the closing is enacted, then the owner receives their funds. So.
And that's been a key point as we've been meeting, talking with GL. We've talked to the city attorney at West Valley as well, who has done this previously. We wanted to know kind of what the risk is to the city since we are placing this assessment. It's a voluntary assessment, but if financing goes wrong, if they aren't paying this back, we wanted to know what would happen to the city. The state has set it up very well that we are able to assign this to the lender. The lender indemnifies the city and takes on that responsibility.
You, you mentioned two things.
Can I ask a question? Just one question. You met, you talked about, and I don't remember this part, but the part about where it's starting out in the cities before they give it to the lender? Do we have any responsibility? If they happen to file bankruptcy before it went over to the lender, does that, do we hold any responsibility for that?
No.
Okay.
You do not. And, and like, if, if the documents are written such that, you know, the whole purpose was to transfer that responsibility. If it doesn't, if, if those things, if he just, if they declared bankruptcy, then the loan wouldn't get finalized, the transaction wouldn't.
So it's not finalized when it's in our, until it goes to the lender, it's not finalized?
Correct.
How would you monitor it from the city's side?
Well.
We don't need you, you said, right? You said they, this, the bank.
Well, someone has to keep track of those.
To manage the paperwork.
Collection.
Yeah. So who would you, who would be responsible?
That would be part of our conversation. But we already have our code enforcement that monitors liens and on, on properties. That would be part of it. But again, the actual enforcement of it will be on the lender. And then SRS, I believe you also report on these to OED as well.
Well, yeah, we have reporting out to them. The state can be, we can be audited at any point in time, so we keep pretty extensive records. Before, I forgot it though, when you mentioned bankruptcy, knock on the wood as soon as I say this, we haven't had a CPACE loan.
Have you really?
No, they've either been restructured, you know, or what, but they, that has not happened yet. Now, part of the benefit of CPACE, it's different. While lenders will consent, if a donor gets in arrears, the only thing that is due is what is in arrears. It does not escalate or accelerate. Yeah, like a regular loan does. So that really does give lenders a lot more comfort. And, and as a rule, the, the percentage of the CPACE loan relative to value is quite a bit less than, you know, other loans, whatever. So at this point in time, so far, so good. But, you know, to, to be fair, I understand the question, so. What I, the other point I was going to make is, if you want, like, the, the lenders or the borrowers, rather, that have used this, this is an actual example of a project wherein someone, an owner, replaced a mezzanine loan with CPACE, and they lowered their overall cost of capital by almost two hundred basis points. That's, that's a significant amount, which would lower their payments and obviously make it easier for them to repay what, you know, their loan. That's how it's been typically used in, in Utah as well. So a couple of the examples? The downtown, the Hyatt Regency Downtown used CPACE. And that, twenty twenty, at that point in time, was the largest CPACE loan to date in the US. Since then, it's been surpassed with some really mega loans. But they had, were very focused on energy efficiency. The development in the center in West Valley City, industrial development, four hundred thousand square feet, very high efficient materials and systems. And then finally, the ascent condo hotel in Park City was a, a development that the owner could not make, get through the pandemic, and ended up selling it while it was still under construction. But they were able to use CPACE to reduce, you know, future costs, et cetera. And that ended up being like a thirty million dollar CPACE loan, which is, was pretty significant, but that's one of the more reasons. So there are other examples, but that just lets you know that it's pretty diverse. Well, we have had a lot of hospitality, but the other, you know, sectors are also open to that. And I think that pretty much wraps it up. That's me, and thank you.
Just in summary, though, this might not work for every single project, but we see the benefit of being, having this program available to, for when the project does make sense, when a, a new or existing building would like to make these improvements, that the city has this tool available that they can make these energy upgrades or seismic upgrades.
Well, one of the questions that I've been asked is, all right, so if we implement this, does that mean people have to use it? Absolutely not. You know, there's no requirements. It doesn't change anything with zoning or taxes or anything, so it's completely voluntary.
Yeah. And so how it will work is, we have an opt-in resolution to opt into the program. We'll have a professional services agreement with SRS. And then as these projects come forward, we'll be able to, to make those work and place the assessment then going forward.
That seems a great idea.
Let me try to understand it.
Yeah.
I'm kind of a right-brained person, so somebody draws a line to make a flower out of it? So let me understand finance stuff here. So there's a service being offered. We're looking at entering some kind of agreement with that service being offered. That service will help the companies better finance their projects for energy efficiency type of project, water-saving project. There's no cost to the city?
There is.
It's paid by the individual, a percentage of the loan that they get. But we're just sort of the, hey, look, there's something available for you. Come and get it if you want.
You're the conduit, actually. You know, it flows through you, because you have the authority to make this type of assessment.
Yeah. The state has set it up that it protects the cities or counties. Yeah, I already got that. I just wanted to make sure what was our.
Okay.
So we're sort of going, hey, we like it. We have the authority to place that assessment.
Because you're the entity that can. And, and, you know, in Colorado, it's a little bit easier to deal with, because once a county opts in, then anyone, any city or whatever in the county can use it. In Utah, the way the statute is, every single city and county have to approve it individually. So it's, it's, you can't just get a blanket.
So West Valley is the only city so far? Or is there other cities?
No, Salt Lake City's, we've had several projects, Park City, Summit County.
Okay, oh, yeah, Park City, yes, okay. Blank or? Like, just, I'm just like, I know you need us, but it's kind of like, do you really need us? Can't you just?
Not according to the way they set the program up.
We, we had the same thought, is it does seem too easy? Or, you know, where, where's the risk going to come back? And it's been a lot of conversations with the city attorney's office and looking into the program. But it, and the state, through the code, has set this up, so there is very.
One other point, that, just remembering back, why we were hired. SRS has a lot of experience. But the state, rather than administer, like in statute, they are the administrator, but they have the right to hire a third-party administrator, which they wanted to do because we have, southern expression, no dog in the hunt. You know, we probably won't be accused of showing favoritism to one developer or another, or one type of development. We're third-party, independent sign-off. Yes, this meets the technical, so that takes the state and the city or, really out of that discussion. This is, we have engineers that are experts in their field. So you basically are turning this process over to a group that the state has vetted. Well, you know, we went through our process to get them, request to be hired for this. And it really is a matter of making sure everybody's bases are covered. You're not making these decisions.
Right.
This, this is about, does it meet the statutory requirements? And we can sign off and say that it does.
So it's kind of something that we can offer our citizens or support them doing?
A, a lot of this come, you know, a lot of the cities, our relationships have come through economic development, because it's a tool, you know, that you can say you have, that people can use if they choose to.
Yeah, that's a good way.
Yeah.
This is a hard question to ask in front of her, but is, is this the only company that does this in the state? Or are there others that also do the same thing? And if so, should we be also listening to that in their presentation?
No, that's a great question. The state has identified specifically SRS as the administrator through.
And we went through an RFP process.
All right, and I just wanted to ask that question.
And that's perfect. You do not offend me at all. My background, valuation and consulting, and I was trained by a gentleman that I prepared for court on a legal basis, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's kind of makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll let certain projects know about this. And obviously, if there is interest, we'll then work with SRS to make sure we evaluate and make sure it makes sense, and make sure it's a successful project.
So when you say we, that means you? Or is it somebody else in the staff?
To, to evaluate it?
Yeah.
It, it would be SRS who would be evaluating.
But who would facilitate that?
Yeah, I, I think it makes sense with economic development.
That's, that's what I was trying to get to. Well, I was just thinking, well, they need to hire somebody, because you're plates. No?
One of the main purposes.
Brandon's back there going, oh, okay.
Supposed to serve is to, to manage this process and, and take as few resources from the jurisdiction as possible.
Okay.
That's the whole idea, is, you know, from, and particularly over the past couple of years, cities and counties have been so taxed with other things. They don't have time to do a lot of research analysis, and so that's what we do. And, and I think, hopefully, Brandon, he, he's one of my favorite people with West Valley City. I mean, he's very straightforward. It's not going to take you a lot of time, I mean, like, and about what the city needs to expect, so. And it will be trying to help ensure that you spend as little time on this, you have all the information you need. We typically compile, compile the information. It goes to whoever is going to receive this. They make sure everything's there. If it needs to go to council, and then it goes to whoever's going to sign off, and you're done.
But it also encourages environmental responsibility. I think that's really important, so I'm, I'm really glad.
Well, and from a financial perspective. Because again, like, my, my assessments historically are about, how's this going to impact long-term asset values? And over the last twenty years, energy has played an increasing role in investors and how they look at property. So it's a.
Why would it come to the council?
So she just says. It says once.
Oh.
It does, once is in going forward.
Oh, got it. Because I'm going, do we see all these? And I'm going, hmm, okay, all righty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, so it, by the state process that they've established, we opt in by resolution through the council.
Oh, got it, okay. And how did you find out about this? Is it just something in your wheelhouse that you had that you wanted?
I'd heard about CPACE previously, but BD brought this specific project that's looking here.
That makes sense.
And thank you for your time.
Oh, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you have anything else, or if there are more questions, you know, I'll make myself available.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
You're not from Utah, huh?
Southern Utah?
There you go. Oh, you're savvy enough to go southern Utah, southern Brown.
I, I have lived a few places, overseas here, but I fell in love with Park City, and, and that's where I live, yeah.
So the girl's from?
Tennessee, Georgia.
I knew you said.
Georgia.
Australia. Georgia, Canada. Oregon, Washington, Park City.
Wow, I didn't pick up on only one of them.
Georgia. I can say with, you know, without hesitation, I, I know where I want to be. Unfortunately, I raised two girls that are just as independent. One's in Colorado, but the other's back in Sydney, so. It's beautiful, though. It gives me an excuse for this.
You know that for Karen.
I'm sorry?
Karen Blaine, the mayor of West Valley, her daughter. They just got back. I'd love to ask her.
Good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to discussion item number three, Department Report from Greg Valon, presenting twenty minutes. Hello.
Hello there.
Happy New Year.
Yes, Happy New Year.
Or whatever. Well, we already. Potted house. And you better take care of that. Where's that?
It's in the basement. In the freezer. Anyway.
You can see my taxes, everything you want on here.
Wow. Can we take five minutes and just go over that?
Get your financial, Brandon, come on up here. Let's forget his financials.
I don't really have any.
It's gone. I purposely put those in a different folder. Obviously.
You'd have pulled that up. Awesome. We could have seen yours before.
There we go. Oh, my goodness. Well, well, I'm sorry, welcome, yeah. Thanks for letting me be here today. Mayor, thank you. Here we go, let's just jump right in. So I thought tonight, I. Here we go. Let's just jump right in. So I thought tonight, I, I think I've always said this. Our greatest asset as, as a city, I think as a, as a power department is our employees, right? I mean, is that's, the city represents, you know, what they represent with our employees really things come along. So I just kind of want to, I'm going to pick the forestry today and I just want to highlight them just a little bit. So, um, so Matt Erklin's, uh, if you know Matt, I mean, amazing. He is awesome. Uh, he, he can ask him to do anything and he'll do it. He's our forestry supervisor. And under him is the forestry division that's composed of four two-man crews. Um, so we have, uh, the forestry crew supervisors are Shane York, John Johnson, Austin Phillips and Derek Neil. Then we have, uh, utility arborists, Dustin Jacobs, he goes by Monkey. Uh, Tom Pugmire, Austin Howard and Tyson Melee. And he's our newest hire and we're, we're glad to have him. Out in our world, it's hard to find people, uh, in this line of work in forestry, substations, line crews, metering. The technical fields are hard to come by. Anybody that means doesn't, the new generation doesn't seem to want to go into these technical fields. We got to figure out how to get them interested because, I mean, they're amazing jobs and, uh, but our forestry, I mean, they're just, they're amazing. So we're grateful to get Tyson. I've known cities that have had, uh, forestry positions open or arborist positions open for over a year. They could not get any, they couldn't find anybody that can work. So they find anything, get a, uh, do a partnership. So we're grateful to get Tyson. He comes, uh, very well qualified. And so he rounds out our crew. Um, I will let you know, I'll be probably looking at the budget this year to maybe do a little thing, do something different with our arborist division, but we'll go through that process and we'll, we'll talk about that later. But just putting that, planting that seed right now. So.
I understand that you have different crews for different areas from the west side to the east side. Like one crew takes care of the east side, one crew takes care of the west side. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. They all have different areas that they're, that is their sole.
I was talking to one of your.
Yep. Sole responsibility.
We're on your side.
Yeah.
And I said, okay.
And so.
Cause I was wondering who was trimming my tree.
And if you think at one of our first snowstorms, it was a heavy wet snow, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the leaves are still on the trees.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we had any outage. Just related to trees. Thank you. We don't talk about these things normally because it's, we don't want to jinx ourselves and I'm not superstitious, believe me. Hey, but squirrels?
That's what we're talking about today.
Wait till my next, wait till my next slide.
Squirrels don't work on here. They're not that cute. The cutest ones are like.
It is, it is.
Or the ones that are challengers.
It is kind of sad because there are.
No, they are cute, but they do love it.
They're doing a lot of damage to our system. Yeah. So let's just look for 2024, our forestry crews pruned 870 trees. Removed 218 trees and other vegetation within Murray City's overhead power circuits. That's, that's, that's awesome. Uh, they means, they maintained 668 street trees. Uh, they removed 218 of those for different reasons. Some are dying, uh, just need to be replaced and, um, it's up to the homeowners if they want to repair to buy a new tree to put in its place. But, uh, I think that's a great, I think that's a great thing that we offer our citizens and, um, I think it's, it's nice. If you look around Murray, uh, I think the street trees are amazing and it helps, helps the look of our city.
It was one of the things that drew me here 25 years ago.
Oh, yeah, literally. Yeah.
Are we still Tree City USA?
Yeah, we're coming right up on that one too. We'll talk about in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, um, so they, they maintain, so they maintain 668 street trees and removed 98, 198 of those that were dying or damaged in the city infrastructure. Then they planted 89, 89 trees throughout the city for a, a street tree planting program, which, uh, that's about our max. We try to do every year. Um, otherwise it just overwhelms us. So. Uh, there's like a lottery system almost as soon as. Um, oof, I can't remember the dollar amount exactly.
When I did that back in the day, I think it was like 40, 30.
I guess a little more than that.
I think it was like 67 or 70.
Might be 80. I can't, I can't remember. Sorry. I don't have the exact amount.
No, that's a great.
But it's, it's, it's a good program. I watch it's maybe 240. I don't know. I, I. I don't think it's that much. That's probably what we pay for the trees, but we, we, we pay more for the trees and pass them on to our citizens. But, um, just don't quote me on any of that. Um, but, um, so this is the one I like right here. There are six tree, uh, tree caused outages according to our outage report summary for the year. Less than 2% of our outages. So if you think about all the trees, if you just drive around and look at our power lines, look at the trees, see how many trees are close to our power lines. Our, our forestry division, I'm sorry, they, they are just amazing.
Yeah. You know what they're, they're great at also, you call them up, I've had people around where I live or I've had people tell me recently that they're right in the power lines. They came right out.
Yeah.
Cut them, come down, turned them over.
Yeah, they'll remove them and they'll, they'll clear them as much as will, as much as the citizens let us take.
Yeah.
They'll let us remove them. That's great. And they can plant a tree somewhere else. That's not right underneath our power lines, but, uh, that's a great percentage.
Yeah. And trees are the number one cause of power outages in the nation. To have that low of percentages would be pretty outstanding.
So that's, that's, that's pretty impressive. So I just say, the outage portion guys are amazing. Uh, so here we go. Murray State received its 47 consecutive recognitions, recognize our recognition as a Tree City USA. And Murray is one of the first cities in the Utah state to be granted Tree City USA recognition. So I think that's awesome. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh.
And remind me how we get that designation?
There's, there's this, there's a few things that we have to do. Um, we have to have a, our tree committee. Um, we have to put so many, I think hours into a tree, tree program. We do an Arbor Day. I mean, there's a, there's a pretty long list of things that keeps us in that and we make sure we check all those every year. We don't want to lose that because it's, it's pretty awesome. Pretty amazing, I think.
So it's not a number of trees that we have planted?
Um, that's, that could be part of the, part of the pro, uh, part of the problem. That is part of the problem. No, I was kidding. But that's, it's all based on just this criteria that, uh, we meet every year. But it's, it's amazing. I, I think it's an amazing thing that we're involved in. So we're happy to, to facilitate that every year. So.
Now trees is something like one per acre, something like that. It's not a very high percentage. But there is a tree per geographic area that you have to have.
Oh, okay.
As part of the tree. We meet that, we meet that really well, I think. So.
Yeah.
We're clear as you can tell.
The cotters help with that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Love my trees or my squirrels.
Hey, yes. Okay.
You're the problem.
So then our, our forestry division, they participated in the 2024 Utah tree climbing competition up in Logan and one of our arborists, Tom Pugmire, he competed amongst fourth or further arborists and he did very well. And, uh, it's just fun. It's, it's something that we go participate. We, uh, we help judge that contest and, um, it's, it's something that we love to be involved in. We've had it in our park before, so it's, it's pretty neat. So it'll come back to our park eventually again. So.
You would have sent Monkey up, you would have won that. He had the chance.
I'm just looking at that slide.
If you go by Monkey, he must be a good one, right?
Yes.
I'm just saying, you're watching.
I'm going to call him and tell him to tune in and I'll mention his name one more time.
At the minute 58.
There we go. But you know what? I, I can't say enough about our forestry people. They're just, they're amazing and Matt does such a good job of overseeing them. Just today they took down our Christmas tree. Uh, they put our Christmas tree up. They put Christmas tree up here. They're just, they're involved.
You're holding, you're holding that together pretty well.
Man, sorry.
Line 15 yesterday, we were still in a meeting and I saw someone pull up to see the lights. I thought, wow, I'm getting discouraged. I saw Matt. This is, did he say?
No.
I saw him out. Doug and I were coming back from a meeting and he was out there with everyone about two o'clock taking everything down and all that. And I went, ah, what are you doing? I said, next Monday. Looked at me and goes, what? And I go, next Monday. And he goes, oh my gosh. I said, I'm just kidding. He looked, I can't. I was cheap. I didn't say it. I didn't say it.
That's how good they are. Cause when I left my meeting today, close to quarter to 12, that tree was still up.
Oh, I know. Yeah.
So, I mean, that's pretty amazing that they can take that down in that amount of time. So they're awesome. And it's not just our department on the tree here. There's a lot of help. Our other department goes into that. So.
I appreciate waiting till the, after the 12th day of Christmas.
There we go.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Exactly. Uh, we'll talk about our, our system real quick. Reliability. Um, we had 308 unplanned outages and, um, so the average interruption was about 96 minutes. Average response time, 22 minutes, which I'm sorry is amazing. Um, I live in a, I live outside of any municipalities. So I live on knocking out power and we don't get that kind of response. That's, that's why people live here. I mean, that's one of the reasons to draw people here is everything that Murray has. And we're, we're proud to be a part of that. Uh, so even if the squirrel outages, Murray City Power had an availability of 99.981%, which is pretty awesome. And that right there, that is rocky, um, priceless.
How did you get that picture?
Oh man, I, it took me hours.
You just sat on bullion and just waited for him to come around?
I talked to Barbara. I said, Barbara, I need a good picture of a squirrel. She says, you want a serious picture or a fun picture? I said, give me a fun picture. And that was perfect. Thanks to Barbara. Um, our system peak, uh, last year we peaked at 98.6 megawatts. This season, we, or this, uh, in 2024, we peaked at 101. So a little more, used a little more energy over the previous year. And projects, just wanted to give you a highlight of what we're still working on. AMI, um, we have the infrastructure in and we're slowly getting meters put out. Um, had a glitch in the programming our meters and they are working at that right now in our department. And I think they said they got a thousand meters reprogrammed and ready to put out. So we're, we're moving forward. So that's exciting. That will help. We can't go too fast because we don't want to over, you know, just don't overwhelm anybody as far as putting the meters in and building and all that. But we're, we work very closely. We have a weekly meeting, uh, that's involved with all, everyone that's involved, which I think is awesome. Um, keeps us all on the same page. So we're all working very closely to make sure this works. So we're excited to get to that point where, uh, those meters will do some pretty amazing things for us. Um, so.
Let me share, if you don't mind.
You bet.
Um, about two months ago, Greg and them were, his department was up on getting, and this is, it was okay. This is what I'm about to tell you. I was a little bugged at first, but then I realized. Uh, anyway, they put all new lights on this part of State Street right in front of us. And we thought it was cool because they were all LED and blah, blah, blah. And I get a call from, and, and we really, if, I can't say his name, Mike Callow. That was a dead o' star and he was living because they were kind of an old fashioned style. And I think to your guys' credit, I called you guys and at first I know a couple of your workers were going, wow, here came in. I said, let's just work it out. This is a downtown district area. And so we changed, we're, we're changing them to get, we're moving those to other areas and we're going to have some more, uh, history, historic looking lights. And I, I think we're pretty good to kind of do that kind of stuff because I don't think those people would do it. And when I first responded, I wasn't as nice as I am right now.
I, I met with him and, um, someone across the street, the.
Rights.
Rights. And it was a great meeting and, you know, they, they went for a particular look back in the day and we came in and changed that look. They had two heads and kind of a really old fashioned. We went to a single head that's smaller. I really, I could feel the frustration there and I could, I understood it. It's like, oh, and one of those things that you kind of, once you do something, you can go back and think.
Yeah. Would have been amazing.
I liked the, I liked the all look better actually. So.
Our, our pride could have been really easy and said, too bad, this is what we're doing. But we just said, let's work with them. That's what it's all about. And it's ended up being a really good thing for our relationship.
Yeah. So we're, we're going to move forward and we'll let them have some input on the lights we choose even. So it's, I think it's going to be awesome. So. Uh, thanks to the mayor and we'll go forward with that. Uh, so a little cottonwood hydro or pin stock, we can get, we can run this, we can run this year. It's going to need some work. So a year from now, we'll have someone in there probably relining their whole pin stock. Um, we'll, we'll find out what, what that, what that will cost, but just want, I'm just kind of giving you some ideas of what we're looking at. Turbines, we're looking at the system controls right now. I think we've all been, uh, updated on system controls and the costs and, uh, turbine upgrades. We're, you know, we're a lot of money again that we're talking, but I think it's one of those things that needs to be done. So we're working through that. Then our central substation, uh, we're, we're going to get an RFP so we can, uh, proceed with that. Then we'll, we'll, we'll talk bonding eventually.
Oh.
Woo. Sustainability is just part of that. It's all about.
That happens every time I'm in this.
I know.
He's the wise guy.
I am so moved. Yeah.
Love it.
Only for you.
The lights on, sorry. But, uh, anyway, we're, we're, we've got a lot going on. Um, all our, all our departments are busy. I think we have 60 jobs open right now, different things. So it's, we're, we're.
That you need to fill?
No, no, no. 60, 60, 60 jobs within.
I was going, you've got 60 jobs to fill?
Work orders. We got, we got 60, no, 60 open work orders.
Oh, okay.
We have, we have two positions that are open right now. We just had a line working foreman retire. He had his party today. And we're, we're, we just filled that position and then we're going to hire an apprentice lineman. And we have an apprentice substation technician position open right now. Once we get those two open or filled, uh, we'll be, uh.
Eric Fonger didn't leave yet.
Not yet. I told, I told him today, it's got to be at least five years. So.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Anyway, um, that's, if you got, that's kind of, that's a little bit of an update on what we're doing and have any questions? Excellent. Thank you.
That was good.
Yeah, question.
That sounded like you.
No questions. Great. Okay. I'm out of here.
We're going to, there we go again. Let's get that off of there.
Thank you.
Well, I, I just want you to know, our, our, um, our department really appreciates the leadership of our city. So thank you. You guys all doing a wonderful job. We just, we love the support and, um, thank you very much. There we go. Yeah. Excellent. Back to the monkey.
Okay, our next discussion item is number four, discussion on an ordinance amending the city's fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Brenda Moore presenting 15 minutes.
Would you like if it takes that long or else you want me to read them all? Um, so about once a quarter, I like to do a budget opening for those unexpected things that have come up or the ones we expect every year, but never know how much they're going to actually be. So, um, so one of the things that this resolution will do, um, it will keep my, help me keep my, uh, no write-up from the auditor in that it allows me to adjust the budget for the amount that I need to transfer to the CIP plan to keep us at 26%. And it also allows me to adjust the budget for the amount of, um, transportation tax that we receive that comes in above budget because I budgeted how much, that whole transportation tax gets moved to CIP and that's where we spend it. Well, if it comes in above budget, I need to move it and I need to adjust the budget. So that's the, um, the language is in this budget opening to allow me to do that. And I always tell you and I will continue to tell you how much that is when it happens, which is usually next September. Um.
You mean this September or?
The one that's coming up.
Oh, okay.
Cause it's at the end of the year after we get all the numbers finalized. They finally have put all the bills in for stuff that had happened until June 30th. Um, so other things, we've got some grants that came in. Um, the, a, a new one. The JAG grant is, um, we get every year. That one was 25,000 this year. Uh, the Parks and Rec, Intermountain Health started donating a little bit of money here and there for some of our activities. So they donated $3,000 for a volunteer banquet.
Okay.
Um, the Parks Department, a new one, the Utah Department of Natural Resources gave us 48,000 to do some trail maintenance improvements on the Jordan River. So that's a really good one. Um, Bruce Holyoke went for that. Uh, the Fire Department's EMPG grant's always there. Fire went out on, I think it was five or six different fires this year for a total of 777, $770,000 of reimbursement. And this outlines where it's going. 121,000 of that will go over to CIP to be used to, to purchase equipment. So that helps everybody because that's 121,000 that they can use for fire equipment that doesn't have to come from general funds. Um, so, uh.
I have a question on that one.
Mm-hmm.
So where it says, um, travel 15,808 dollars and direct costs 400 and.
They had to replace a piece of equipment.
The what?
They replaced a piece of equipment. So.
Oh, but then it says 408. Is it, was it 408 dollars or was it?
408.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So they, they, um, when they do these reimbursements, if we purchase equipment, travel, I put them in special accounts so we can track it.
Well, I didn't know if it was 408,000 or 408.
Nope. 408, literally a small piece of equipment.
She can't believe this. She's going 408. We've never done anything for 408 dollars.
I know. I'm going, was there not extra zeros behind that? No. Okay. Sounds perfect. Okay.
Um, and so the, one of the. Um, and so, the, one of the new things is, you know, they're doing that bus rapid transit. And UTA approached us and the arts people, and instead of just putting plain glass on those, we're putting some art on there.
Where, where are you talking? Is it the one that's being built over by the school district?
It's the Murray, it's the Murray section, it's gonna run from our, from, um, the community college out on Redwood Road.
Got it.
To our train station. To the, where the buses come there, so there'll be a bus rapid transit, and there will be stations along it.
Okay, got it, yes.
So, in the Murray stations, we are paying to put an art project on the glass for, on the stations for that bus rapid transit.
Is there one that's being built by the school district on the north side, is that one?
That's, that's one of the stations, yeah.
That's one.
I was wondering what was being built there, and they said, uh, something for the school, and I'm going.
So, anyway, um.
Okay, so that will have a piece of artwork, okay, got it.
So, that's what this, yeah, so that's what, there's thirty thousand dollars is for, because arts doesn't have the money sitting in their budget just to do something random. And then, planning and zoning, you probably are expecting this, for the short-term rental software, so that they can just check on it.
Yes.
Get information. And capital improvement project, already talked about the water land fire, uh, they're, they've been working to replace this truck number forty-seven. They did all they could to save money on other things for the overage, and they still need an extra twenty-five thousand dollars. So, they, they, you know, reused a truck bed on one of their other projects and did all this stuff, and they still need an extra, uh, twenty-five thousand. So, this is using interest to pay for that.
So, I'm curious. It says, I verified the equipment they are reusing, our safe app will do the job. How did you do that? I didn't know you had those skills.
I talked to him. But I put them through the third degree, because I want them.
She was driving back and forth.
Yeah, I want them, I talked to them.
She drives it on the weekends.
And I trust Josh that he would not put his guys out in unsafe equipment. And so, I put him through the third degree, so are you sure that this will, you know, if you reuse a truck bed, he said, yes, this one is a good truck bed. It's the truck that wore out, not the bed.
Okay.
Oh, gosh.
That's how I.
I just thought, wow, this is a sign of you, I wasn't.
There's a lot of signs underneath this.
Sorry.
Change the oil.
I ver, I verify with Josh.
It just reminds me of back in the fifties, you got a pair of jeans, you're gonna pass it down to the next kid, just put the patches, pass it down to the next kid, make it shorter.
Yeah, so some, sometimes they can reuse, and they will reuse, as long as, and I emphasize, I asked him three different times, are you sure it's gonna be safe? And he said, yes, I said, okay.
We, we had a truck back, I wanna say ten, eleven years ago, and the Parks Department showed us, and there was a hole in the cab, in the bottom. And I said, you can see the floor, this isn't safe, and they said, well, it's what we have, and I'm going, oh, that's gotta be changed.
We don't have those anymore. We have a much nicer fleet now. The power fund, um, in the future, was going to get a, our bronze bucket truck, they found one that's available now. And the one that we are using, we're going to replace in the future, is being, having complaints from neighbors, because it is so noisy and it's not reliable anymore. So, we need to get that replaced. So, um, we're putting that, um, into their budget now, it will be taken out of the future budget. We just, they need to have the, the good truck, so, um, that's what this is for. And interest revenue, we're earning money that I didn't anticipate. Murray Parkway Fund, uh, same deal, they had a ball picker, that's the thing that gathers up the balls in the driving range.
Oh, thank you, I didn't know what that was, I'm going.
Okay, and then they, um, they have an old one, they needed a new clutch, they could buy a new, well, they could buy a brand-new refurbished one uh, for ninety-five hundred dollars, and instead of the twenty thousand, a brand-new one would cost them. And so, um, their interest will cover that, because they now have a fund balance that is generating interest. And then the Risk Fund settled a case, um, and, um, for four hundred thousand dollars, so we needed to put that in our liability. Some of it was reimbursed from the insurance company, and the remaining hundred and sixty-three will come out of their reserves.
So, what was a lawsuit that was settled for four hundred thousand?
Is that confidential?
Isn't that confidential? It was, it was.
I mean, if we're gonna prove it, we should probably know what it is.
It was the, a rumble death, um, well, it was a settlement in a, um, PMS case. So, um, okay.
As a citizen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To the city, for our, for that's kind of.
Yep. So, um, it was settled, it's done. It costs, the settlement was four hundred thousand, and our insurance covers everything, everything above two hundred and fifty. Plus legal fees, so it wasn't just four hundred.
Yeah.
Because, so, that is, um, what's in the budget opening, any questions?
That was good, thank you for going through and checking down.
Yeah.
That looks good.
Stories I make them tell me when they want to get money. That's the short version that I have in here. Yes.
Especially if it calls you.
The citizens can't.
Changing oil.
Yeah.
About the noise.
That's right.
And if the taxes, because they want a non-noisy bucket.
They want a non-noisy bucket truck.
I love that.
Well, and I want a safe bucket truck too, and one that they don't have to run all the time, because the batteries won't hold the charge, and so they have to run it to keep lifting the lift. So, it's okay.
Yeah, we don't want that.
I'm first on the next thing, so I just can see here.
Is it just state bucks?
Oh, you're, oh, you are, okay, we're on discussion item number five, we'll just go as follows. Reports from interlocal boards and committees, thirty minutes, five minutes each. Utah Infrastructure Agency, Brenda Moore, then, uh, Valley Emergency Communications Center, Metro Fire, and Utah Telecom, Telecommunication Open Infrastructure Agency, Doug Hill. And then, finally, Council of Governments and Wasatch Front Wait and Recycling District, Willard E. Mayor Hales. So, we will just follow with those, go ahead, Brenda.
Okay, so, uh, this fall, UIA has done, did another bond nineteen, not to exceed nineteen million dollars, I don't know how it got settled out. To fund some new connections and build out of new development areas in the cities. The cities are all built out, but when you have a new development come in, um, they follow it, and sometimes they even try and get in there while they're building it and get the Utopia lines in, so they need, um, access, and they needed another bond. The revenues currently exceed their debt payments by at least a million dollars a month, so they're doing okay. If they didn't have to pay back the cities for loans prior, they may not need these, uh, bond money. We're kind of trying to weigh the, that. They had their first rate increase, uh, since I've been on it, and since probably they started. UIA now charges four dollars more to the ISP providers, um, than they did before. So, my ISP, which is Sumo, raised my rate five dollars to cover it, and then an extra dollar, but, um, so I pay UIA thirty dollars, and then I pay my ISP forty. So, for seventy bucks, my internet's never out, basically, and it's fast as, fast as can be. And then they're also starting to circle back in the marketing to the original cities and try and tick up some of the take rates. They're good take rates, but they're going back in and just gonna remarket to some of the areas, so that as people move in and out there, where Utopia. Although, I'm Murray citizens, when everybody's, anybody says, I need an internet provider, they say, I wa, I like Utopia X Mission, I like Utopia Blue Utopia. And I've never heard anybody say anything good about Central, so.
We have Utopia X Mission, and we're quite happy.
Yep, so.
Of course, we're old, and we don't really care.
But they are the fastest one around, for the price, and they do have some really fast speeds, they're more than that.
Yes, yes.
If you really need your gaming to be really fast, so, or your works.
Paul, are you into gaming?
Yeah, I'm a gear.
Okay.
We didn't have time.
Usually late at night.
Wow.
Hey, you don't have much time.
Guys, thank you for, okay, we're on to Doug.
I've asked Doug to do, um, COGS, Doug, are you gonna do that right now, after?
Yeah, I'll do it, thank you.
Together.
It occurred to me as I was listening to Brenda that, uh, some of you may not understand why we have Utopia and UIA. So, let me just give you a little background on that. So, originally, when, um, the cities, the eleven, Murray was one of, uh, one of eleven original cities that uh, was involved with the creation of Utopia. It was having, initially, at the time that it was created, it had a lot of debt and financial issues that were associated with it. And, um, and so, Utopia decided that they needed to create another entity that would not have the debt associated with it, which would allow them to go out and bond and build new, uh, build new infrastructure. And that's essentially why it's Utopia and UIA. So, what happens nowadays is that all of the new construction and the new money goes to UIA. And every year, UIA transfers, uh, a portion of the revenue that they collect back to Utopia. And then, Utopia, um, makes the debt service for the original bonds that were taken out. And over the last, I think now, four years, three or four years, they are in a position that they can return money back to the city. So, we've been getting checks, well, last year we received a little over five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're expecting about the same, maybe a little bit more this year. And going forward, as UIA continues to generate revenue, Utopia will, should, will be able to share that money with the city. So, even though the city, you know, pays almost two million dollars a year to retire those initial bonds. Uh, I think we've probably got, what, about sixteen more years, Brenda, left on those bonds? So, there's still a long, long time left before those original bonds are retired. The revenue that is brought in, uh, hopefully, at some point in time in the future, when we're probably all gone, will be a source of revenue that will come into the city, uh, without any debt requirements.
Because I think they increase it two percent every year?
The, uh, the, well, they retired the swaps, it used to be that way, but about two years ago, they retired what was called swaps, which is a financial financing mechanism that, yeah, required the city, the interest rates to increase every year. But a couple of years ago, when the interest rates started to go up, they were able to reverse it and refinance and retire the swap. So, now we have a fixed interest rate that we deal with.
Do you know if the state of Utah allows, you know, they were getting into this when Utopia was, you know, UIA split? They allow that kind of stuff anymore? Where you can have a company, and then you're already bonded out, so you create another company, a sister company, so you can bond more?
I, I do not know, GL, do you know if the, they haven't addressed this yet? So, I assume you still can do things like that.
I know that was a big issue back in the day.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so, so I'm here just to talk then a little bit about Utopia, um, they, there's not a lot of change with the way that they're operating. But these statistics that you can see on these slides kind of show you that they're continuing to grow like what Brenda says. So, right now, um, I need to go back, uh, because I've got, there we go. Right, right now, uh, Utopia just passed, in October, they just passed seventy thousand subscribers. They're in fifty-five cities, there are currently thirty service providers that are, uh, on the Utopia network. And Utopia, uh, or UIA is, is, or I, I take it back, Utopia is expanding their networks in Bountiful and Bozeman and Idaho Falls. In Murray specifically, there are seventeen thousand five hundred properties that, uh, has Utopia in front of it. And of those seventeen thousand five hundred, there are about four thousand seven hundred approximately subscribers that take advantage of Utopia's network, which is a thirty point oh five percent take rate. So, just almost not quite a third of our residences and businesses are taking advantage of the Utopia network. That, if you compare that to a lot of the other cities that are part of the Utopia network, that's, that's probably on the low end. And it's probably because we're in Salt Lake County, and there's a lot of competition out there. So, so if you were to go to a city like, uh, like Brigham City or Payson, there's not the same number of, uh, network providers out there, so they have a higher take rate. You're gonna see some cities that are in the eighty percent to ninety percent take rate. But the ones in Salt Lake County, like Murray, like Midvale, like West Valley City, um, have a lower take rate, primarily just because you've got Comcast and Google and all these other, uh, competitors out there.
Doug, is West Valley still the lowest?
West Valley is still the lowest, uh, has the lowest take rate.
That is so weird.
It's so shocking, because they were so involved with this and had full control with two other cities, Midvale and Brigham, and I'm just surprised that they're not one of the highest, if you ask with you.
And do we know, who are these guys?
So, we have, we have somebody, I think it's, so, in, right now, we have people in your district.
Oh, yeah.
That are go, uh, tearing up backyards and.
Yes, they are.
And public right-of-ways, and they are, as I, as I remember, they are, um, part of the Verizon, uh, network.
So, they want to compete with Utopia then?
Yeah, they're more companies that want, that are coming and want to compete. What they're basically doing is they're upgrading their copper line kind of, uh, backbone to go to fiber, is what they're doing. So, they have, they have to install.
I'm getting calls all the time.
We have, and, and, and we've talked about this before, but the city has also been approached by Google, they want to come into Murray City.
I was just gonna ask about.
But we have not been able to reach an agreement with them on their franchise fee. They, they want a lower franchise fee than what everybody else is paying.
Yeah, they're, they're, we were.
Yeah, so we've told them, we've told them essentially, no.
They don't have any money.
I know, I know, like Google.
Yeah, Google.
So, we've said no.
So, they, are they coming in the backyards in your district? Are they coming through with Utop, where Utopia has their line? Are they going along that, or are they going?
Well, Utopia's mostly in the front yards, but, so these people are kind of going in the backyards, yeah.
With the cables going, you know.
Okay.
They're putting beautiful green boxes in everybody's backyard.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
My squirrels won't like it.
Those squirrels. My squirrels.
All right, any questions, uh, Utopia then? Okay, let me move on then to, uh, VEC, Valley Emergency Communication Center. So, just some statistics that came out of our last board meeting. So, VEC, right, in, in October, which was the last, uh, meeting that I attended, they were, are experiencing seventy-one thousand, almost seventy-two thousand calls, uh, a month. That was, that's the highest that they've been for, for quite some time. Of those seventy-one thousand calls, twenty-three thousand of them are nine-one-one calls, and the other, almost forty-nine thousand are non-emergency calls. And that's one of the challenges that VEC is working with, is they're trying to reduce the number of non-emergency calls that the dispatchers have to deal with, so that they can respond quicker to the nine-eleven calls. And so, they've been talking about ways in which they can, um, separate those non-emergency calls, so. One way to do that is when you call nine-one-one, that's the first question you're gonna get. So one way to do that is when you call nine-one-one, that's the first question you're gonna get asked. Is this an emergency and non-emergency? And then they can bump the non-emergency calls off. Of those calls that they received in Oc- in, in October, ninety-seven point five percent of those calls were answered in fifty, fifteen seconds or less. Um, ninety-eight percent were answered in twenty seconds or less, which is well below the, the standard required by the state of Utah. Um, they also are only transferring one percent of the calls, which is again, lower than what the state is requiring. And they're only getting an abandonment of five point three-three percent. So that would be somebody who hangs up after they called. So that's again, lower than, than what the standard is. Um, they recent, Beck recently, uh, contracted with Qualtrics to, uh, do some, uh, customer surveys, customer satisfaction surveys. And what they found is that four point five-three percent out of a five, um, uh, or, or seventeen thousand people rated Beck as a four point five-three out of five as far as customer service goes. So that's a, a good statement for the dispatchers that work in a very stressful situation. And then, uh, some of the projects that Beck has been working on, uh, one of the big projects that they took on in the last quarter of last year was they had to reprogram all of the radios that are used by police and fire departments. And you can, can't imagine how many radios that was. But everybody had to basically bring a radio in, uh, every firefighter, paramedic, every police officer had to bring their radios and then have them reprogrammed. And that's to comply with, the reason for that was to get everybody on, um, a new, uh, frequency, a new system. Um, that it was required by the state, uh, you, they call it UCA, which is a department within the state that deals with communications, emergency communications. Um, they're working, they're, what they're trying to do also is work on a new system to deal with towing requests. So when police officers have to have a vehicle towed for any reason, they're trying, um, trying to figure out how to best handle those kind of requests to deal with towing. Um, they are doing a staffing compensation analysis, um, which we have not, as board members, have seen yet, but, um, they're thinking that they're gonna have to be making adjustments to the compensation of their employees in order to stay competitive and they just wanna know where they fall. And then they've been working with the fire departments, with our fire department and others, to test out a new, what they call Automatic Vehicle Pilot Program, ADL, which basically is a software system that will dispatch the closest unit to the emergency, regardless of whether, what city it belongs to. So, um, so that has, that has been a problem particularly for our fire department in Murray because what is, well, what our fire department has found is that they've been dispatching other city fire departments to citizens in Murray City simply because they happen to be closer by the way the crow flies, but maybe not fastest, right? Because of roads and turns and-
Tracks.
traffic lights and things like that. So Chief Mennelman has been, and the other chiefs have been working to test out a system that would try to keep the calls that, um, come from Murray would allow our fire department and paramedics to respond in Murray so that our citizens are seeing Murray vehicles instead of another agency's vehicles. So that's being tested right now as a pilot program and it seems to be working pretty well, which, um, I think we're happy with, with that. Any questions, Ann, about Beck? Okay?
Beck's come away.
This is a, just a couple of interesting slides. So this shows you that, again, for the month of October, the number of calls that the police department dealt with and how we compare to calls from other agencies. So Murray is, you know, one of the top five, um, agencies that receives calls from, uh, Beck that we have to respond to. And then the fire department is right here, so, um, of course Unified is the biggest one and has most of the, most of the area. But, but you can see we're, we get about seven percent, whether they're police or fire, either way, of the calls. All right, um, Metro Fire, I really don't have anything to report on Metro Fire. Uh, we canceled our meetings in the fall and there hasn't really been any issues to deal with. So I'll skip that one. And then the mayor asked that I just report on what's been going on in COG, which is the Salt Lake County Council of Governments.
You'll have a table next time.
I said so. I said, that's, you should have a-
That's ridiculous.
I just wanna make sure you knew I said that.
Well, you know I went up and complained, that's why they-
I didn't want to tell after and I said, "You gotta give them hello."
That's why they brought those tables in. Now they're ridiculous. Oh, come on, you want us to-
She was not happy. So these are, these are the, uh, agenda items that were on the last two COG meetings, the one that was held in November and then the one that was held in August. Um, there is continual and continued discussions on homelessness and, uh, how, how to best solve the homelessness problem. Uh, the Wayne Niederhauser, who is the state homeless, uh, person, um, is at all of the COG meetings and he's talking about a lot of their plans. Some of that you've probably read about in the media, where they're now looking at going to a centralized homeless shelter that would contain all of the services that, um, that would be needed, but they haven't been able to find a location for it.
They were gonna announce a couple of days after the meeting, so a lot of fun is going to happen, but-
What about the one that's just done over at, um, Rose Park? Where the lady just got a little tiny house. Isn't that part of it?
I don't think that's part of-
You mean the tiny home development?
Yeah.
No, that's something that Salt Lake City is doing, um, just for their city. But statewide, they, they're looking for something that's thirty acres in size that they can build enough beds to house all of the homeless population, which is right now around, in the winter time, around, uh, twelve hundred individuals. Um, and so they're looking at, trying to find a place. Originally, they were gonna do a, do it where the Oxbow Jail-
Yes.
was gonna be located-
Yes.
or is located. But that was contingent upon that public safety bond passing-
And would it, it-
which it didn't.
Yeah.
Right. So they're, they're kind of in a bit of a pickle right now trying to identify a location that they can buy thirty acres with the budget that they have. I think the last article I read, a couple of days ago, said that the money that they have would only buy the land and wouldn't build the buildings, so, uh, anyway, that's an issue that the mayors are always talking about.
Before, so. I don't think they're doing any more of the winter, once they get this, which is-
So the numbers gone up or down, or do you know?
Well, they went up, so they went up about, from last year, they went up about three hundred. Uh, so I think last year they had, uh-
That's in Salt Lake County?
They had shelters for about nine hundred and now it's up to twelve hundred in Salt Lake County, yeah.
Has, you, we don't know yet if our amount has gone up yet. We won't know until later in the legislature's sessions.
Yeah, right now, we're playing, paying, Brenda's, how much do we pay now?
Two hundred and sixty-five or? It'll, it'll go up another two to four percent.
Yeah, they've, they've been talking about it going up this legislature, but we'll see.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, probably will. Um, we've, the, the mayors have had presentations from both the state as well as the county leaders on affordable housing plans. And, um, Salt Lake County gave a interesting presentation on a study that they had the Lincoln Land Institute initiate for them that identified corporate-owned housing in, um, in Salt Lake County. And, um, of course, the purpose of that was to try to get a handle on why, i- if, if corporate entities are buying housing in Salt Lake County, that's, means there's less housing available for residents in the county. And so this is helping to develop some policies that I think we'll see at the legislature this year. In fact, I've already heard of some bills that talk about, uh, if you buy a home, you can't sell it for a year or-
Yeah, I did, I've read that. Yeah, I, yes.
You know, some of those kinds of policies are being talked about in the legislature in order to get around this, this corporate policy.
That's out right there. Who says?
Yeah, right.
There was an interesting presentation by a high school student about, I think she was from Harriman. You were there, I think, about air, airsoft, airsoft guns and what a problem it is in their communities. And that she was encouraging mayors to, um, to implement policies that made, uh, made it a safer community by regulating airsoft guns. Anyway.
Are they coming to school?
To my knowledge, it's not a problem in Murray City.
The city's, Harriman's not a problem.
Yeah, but Harriman has, has, is experiencing problems. Well, they're just, they're guns that shoot a small BB. It's driven by air. And, um, a lot of the kids use them to have, it's kind of like paintball, right? It's, they use them to play war games with each other and, but now they're, now they're using it, using them for more kind of a, uh, they're attacking people with them.
Like on the streets, freeways.
And, and they hurt when you get hit. My, my son had an airsoft gun.
Really?
And when, when you get shot with your bare skin, it leaves a good welt on your body and you probably know about it from all the high school students.
Nobody shot me with an airsoft gun.
So far.
So far. Just give it a couple days.
Anyway, it, that was a, that was a presentation that was given. We talked about the public safety bond and then the last item that, uh, was talked about was the T- Tourism Recreation Cultural, Cultural and Convention Funding that the county collects. And they just want, uh, made cities aware that there's, they're on that round of, uh, accepting applications to award that money out to cities that have those kinds of projects. Murray City did not apply this year because we have so many projects already funded with that money that they have a, basically a, a policy that says you can only have three applications active at one time and we have three active, so we didn't apply this year.
What do, it's the mansion, the theater?
I mean, yes, have the, uh-
Armory, recyc-
The parks, we have some of the parks.
That's gonna come off this year, hopefully.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, the River View Park and the one in Dyance, yes.
All right, and then I'll let you-
Well, I'll do Wasatch Front. Wasatch Front, uh, we had a very short meeting. It was Christmas and so they talked a little bit about, uh, I can't remember now what it's called, uh, time off. PTO, thank you, PTO. And, uh, and really Pam had come just last committee of the whole and talked about this stuff. And I owe a big thanks to Diane, if you'll confirm her today. She's going to take all of this.
Oh, you are gonna, you, oh, I read that and I'm going, I think that's a mistake.
We should end it in our next meeting and put it back on.
Okay. Well, I'll say, do I have an alternate? Do I have an alternate?
I know, you know, they don't, I, I, I asked Pam that once and I says, "Why?" Oh, cause Central Valley has an altern- and they don't allow, allow alternates. And I'm thinking, I mean, I honestly, when I can't go in, which has been about a third of the time, I Zoom it. It's really hard to Zoom those meetings, cause you know how they get into- I mean, those, anyway, they're long and there's a lot of stuff.
Oh, they're awful.
Anyway, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm just in.
No, no, the Zooming.
Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry.
No, no.
I need to apologize right now for that.
I'd love to have you all be.
Well, she told me I'm an hour. She said, "We're even." Anyway, so thank you for doing it.
No, I'm happy to do it.
Well, I saw that in the minute, you know, origin and I said, I didn't-
It'll save me a lot of time.
I know, I know.
And like I said, I Zoom a lot of them. Anyway.
Jennifer helps me.
So Pam will be coming out, cause Diane, like me, would bring Pam out.
Oh, yeah, all of us do that. Pam's awesome.
Cause she can-
You saw her last time.
Yeah, yeah.
She's very blunt, you know, we talk about, uh, uh, electric vehicles. And Pam would love to do that, but can't. And so, but, you know, she, I, I always thought she'd be the one that really would maybe get that to happen. That's just too dang expensive and what they have, their big machinery, and it just-
But-
And I get that done. Anyway, thank you.
She knows how I feel about that.
She knows.
Yeah, so I'll, I, I enjoy Pam. It'll be interesting.
I know, she's, she's awesome.
Okay, well, we will adjourn this meeting. Uh, break will start at five fifty, redevelopment agency council chambers at six twenty and then we'll continue from that point.
We'll go start at five fifty.
Five fifty break.
Oh, break.
Starts down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But if people don't wanna start break until five fifty?
I got you.
They can just sit here and just socialize.
Why do I wanna miss whatever it was?
Well, I don't wanna-
I don't wanna be taking my breaks.
I just wanna make sure that we're all-
Oh, it's pretty funny, Pam.
Have you adjourned? Yeah, I adjourned the meeting along the cops. When I said, "Please skip."